We have a 6:50 appointment. We're a little early for that, but I'd be glad to entertain some high school students from 11th grade to discuss the Kinder Morgan pipeline topics as research in a college prep biology course. So why don't you, who are going to come up, everybody is going to come up, come up, have a seat, introduce yourselves. And I recognize a few of you. So you can, we'll start from, you look like you're already ready, so why don't we start with you and do the introductions this way.
All right, I am Angela Geddy.
I am Morgan Pratt.
I'm Michaela Saquera.
I'm Carolyn Doherty.
I'm Nicole Gargano.
All right. And you're all from Pelham?
Yes, we are.
Pelham High School students, all of them 11th grade?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Well, floor is yours.
Okay. We're representing Pelham High School. Over the past few weeks, we've done significant research regarding the Northeast Energy Direct Pipeline, which is going through Pelham, New Hampshire, and other parts of our area. We're aware that youth selectmen have sent out a nonapproval letter, but we're very concerned because in our research, we have concluded that many residents in Pelham are not aware of the significant cons and risks that the pipeline will pose and are only really looking at the pros. Also, we are, if the pipeline gets put on our ballot, we want to make sure that the residents are informed of how dangerous a approval could be. And even if we pass the nonapproval of the pipeline, it might still go through because it is, it is federal jurisdiction. So we must show more resistance if we want to keep this pipeline out of our area.
So one of the major things we researched was like the history of Kinder Morgan itself, and we found that they've had a lot of accidents and incidents in its history. So on just one pipeline in nine years, it had 18 significant incidents, and 36 significant incidents in Texas in just 11 years. And it has a history of lots of property damage, including one explosion creating over $7.5 million in damage. There have had a lot of gas leaks and explosions caused by simple things like failing to test safety devices and firefighting equipment, and failing to inspect pipelines as they are required to. They've also had a lot of pipe erosion, and in one incident, a chunk of pipe was sent hundreds of feet away, and this killed two people by sending a car off the road. And they just continue to violate many safety regulations, giving them a pretty bad reputation as far as natural gas pipelines.
As there are a lot of cons to this, there are actually some pros, believe it or not. It is estimated $11.1 million in tax revenue paid to the towns of New Hampshire, an additional $5.7 million for local school districts. Natural gas produces less sulfur dioxide than fuel or coal, coal. With the crisis of coal shutting down, we now need other resources of energy, and natural gas will be cheaper and cleaner. Kinder Morgan has provided natural gas to New Hampshire for over 60 years without any incidents, and there is already a Tennessee gas pipeline in our town without any incidents, and they have an outstanding industry safety record. Also, it will employ about 3,000 contractors, which is only temporary. And the pipeline will be going through an already existing electrical corridor, which for the most part, the pipeline will be there, but they will need to also clear some trees. And you could find the rest of the pros on kindermorgan.com. So some things that Morgan touched on were trees clearing and other very significant environmental effects. First off, there's a technique that is going to have to be used known as fracking. They've stated that fracking is more than likely going to come up. What fracking is, is when they inject high-pressure liquids into the ground. And by doing this, certain bromides are going to be unearthed from the ground, and these bromides don't seem very harmful, but they can actually mix with organic chemicals in our ecosystem, creating carcinogens. And these carcinogens are going to run right through water supplies, and as most of us, almost all of us are probably on well water, this could make well water dangerous for the residents. It could make it unable to shower in, to cook with, to drink, virtually making your water needing to be tested pretty much daily to make sure that it's safe. Also, the pipeline has something called an easement, which means on both sides of the pipeline, there has to be 50 feet of pretty much nothing. So to do this, they have to cut down significant trees and get rid of shrubs and small plants. A way that they're planning on doing this is using pest, I mean herbicides, which are sometimes very dangerous to environments as well, killing certain species and ruining habitats and ecosystems. These herbicides could also run right into our water supply, getting into our food, and harming most of our residents as well. This easement could also be in specifically my backyard, meaning that virtually we can't do anything with our backyards and 50 feet from the pipeline. Also, we're all in the nuclear zone, pretty much, meaning that if there is an explosion, God forbid, that something very bad is going to come from it. Also, it's said that this specific pipeline is going to run through places like the Merrimack River and other like very sensitive ecosystems, which could kill and lose many specific species and damage a lot of habitats.
So now I have some questions for you, if you don't mind. Has Pelham allowed any surveyors from the pipeline to look at the land?
What was the question?
Has Pelham allowed any surveyors in to look at the land to put down the pipeline?
We have not disallowed them. We, I don't think we've been requested yet, have we, Brian?
No, we, I have not. I think early on, we had received a letter regarding whether or not they could come on town property, and that in turn was turned over to our legal bureau. And basically, the way it was explained to me was that we can't not allow them to go on the property. So as I have not usually, I've been told that they've come on any town property to do any kind of survey, and I'm in pretty close contact with the Kinder Morgan representatives. So I'd like to think that if they were on town land, I would have known about it.
Bill?
Yeah, one of the things that we learned in going through the state laws that apply is that by state law, not by local law or ordinance, by state law, they can go on a property to, a public utility can go on a property to survey it without your permission. There are requirements that they have to follow, including a notification to the owner. But they can go on it without your permission. I think when this started initially, there were a lot of people who sent letters to Kinder Morgan because what we had heard, we went to a meeting in Windham, what, maybe a year ago, a year and a half ago, it was a long time ago, of people who were against the pipeline, and they said, "You can stop them if you send a letter saying, 'You're not allowed to come on my property.'" But we subsequently found out that there's a state law that says you can't. So you can put no trespassing signs and whatnot. Now, there's a good reason for that law. Forget Kinder Morgan for a second. If the electric company, or if the electric company has to come on your property to do some work to, for electric lines and whatnot, and you denied permission, it might mess up the opportunity for your neighbors to get electricity or have repairs done and so on and so forth. I think that's why the law is there, but applies to the pipeline people as well. So we didn't say, "Yes, you can come on the property," because I think, I think our position was, "We can't really say no." So let the chips fall where they may. The law, the state law binds us whether we like it or not.
I think there's essentially two categories of land. There's public lands and there's private lands. Public lands are just that. Anybody can walk on the land, you know, unless we have some specific reason to buy something. On private lands, you normally need permission. However, once the project, and it's not there yet, gets authorized by FERC, they have the right, right to go on anyone's property through federal statute, regardless of what the state or the town or public person says. So once they get that, they have the right to do that. Okay, so I hope we answered your question.
Thank you. What is the process that will decide the pipeline? If the town of Pelham can vote for or against the pipeline, when will the vote take place?
Well, we have not--
It's okay if it's not decided.
What was that?
It's okay if you're not decided yet.
We, we, we don't vote on to approve it or not approve it. We don't. By federal law, it's a federal project, right? Yeah, we're not in the approval cycle. As a matter of fact, there's not many entities in New Hampshire that are in the approval cycle, cycle. The, at the state level, there's a site evaluation committee that may have some say, but I'm not sure they can really say up or down. The PUC is involved, but only from the point of view of approving or disapproving somebody like a customer of the pipeline signing on for, for a certain amount, committing to sign on for so much gas volume, if you will. Beyond that, it's at the federal level. Amy?
Yeah, hi. So I think one thing that, while we may not have that much control over whether it ends up here or not, I know something that we have talked about as a board, is we have some small moniker of input. I won't say control, because when you're talking about the federal government, you can't use that word. But some small moniker of input into where, if it is going to be here, where in Pelham it's going to be. And I don't know if those conversations have taken place yet or not, but I do know that there are, you know, us and people interested in making sure that if they, if it can be placed in places that are safer or less intrusive, that, that that happens.
Mr. Chairman? Let me, let me add to that a little bit. We have a responsibility to you and to the rest of the town and to protect the town. The board has taken a position that we oppose the pipeline because we do not see the need for it to come through New Hampshire. However, given that we also have to face the reality that it may come through, we will try to make sure that we can be proactive and where possible, get them to move the line. We have already sent a letter up to Kinder Morgan requesting some changes in the route of the pipeline, and we may follow up with additional correspondence. The idea is to try and protect wellheads, move it further away from residents and stuff like that. But it's a tricky business because it is kind of snaking through some fairly developed areas in town. And the other problem that they will have is although they initially came in saying they were going to use the existing power line right of way, there's no room in the right of way for them. So they have to be outside the right of way, and depending on how far they go. Paul?
So going back to your initial question was, when do we take a vote and what, and as Chairman Linn has mentioned, we don't actually get to have an official vote. Other towns have introduced warrant articles where they've publicly stated, "We don't want this." In the absence of that, the board and Mr. McCarthy have spent a lot of time attending a lot of meetings. We've sent letters to the governor, our senators. You've attended the coalition meetings for the last eight months. So everything that we can do to, and our opposition has been expressed. But to Chairman Linn's point is, in the, in the worst-case scenario where they say it's going to happen, we're working with, and FERC and Kinder Morgan to say, "If the pipeline has to go through the PB town forest, can we assess what ecosystems and natural wildlife we can avoid to make it not as intrusive?" So the board and the town and Mr. McCarthy have taken that effort, based on the input from the public.
Brian, also while you're doing, what is the, when is the cutoff date for comments? Is there one yet?
I've not been told, but no, it's, it's November, I'm going to say November 15th, but I can double check that.
Okay, so, all right, but go ahead, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to just ask, have you heard or read of the Natural Gas Act in your, in your research? Natural Gas Act?
Sure.
Google that, and it will come up and it'll explain to you the really outrageous rights that these oil companies have to lay a transmission line or a pipeline anywhere they want. And I won't bore you with all the details of it, but it basically, the Natural Gas Act is a federal law that trumps, that has more power than any state law, or any town ordinance, or any warrant article. So, and that's the, that's the venue, that's the vehicle that Kinder Morgan is using to accomplish this goal of putting this pipeline in, in the ground. So if you get a chance, read that, read up about the Natural Gas Act.
All right, so which one?
Can I go?
Go ahead, then, I'll go back.
So, one of my last questions was going to be, to the best of your knowledge, has an application for a certificate of public convenience and necessity been filed? So this would be a certificate to allow federal eminent domain, like you said, we wouldn't have a say, because they have enough power to say that even if the entire town of Pelham wouldn't want it, they would be put into place. This happened in Deerfield. Kinder Morgan used eminent domain and declared, it was federal jurisdiction to put in the pipeline in that area.
Right, I'm not sure they've got to that point, and I know there's a, have they, so they have, they're in the process of preparing their filing, and they were doing that, but they haven't done it yet.
Okay.
The end of November--
I looked at my pipeline expert back behind you, so--
The end, the end of November, I believe, is when they're going to officially file. It's been pushed back from October to November. And, well, she just said something that--
All right, okay. You, you had--
Yeah. We were mostly particularly curious because we, in our research, we found out that the pipeline brute, like you said, has been changed on numerous times because of towns resisting it. And we found that obviously the towns with most resistance are, like the Kinder Morgan are straying from those towns, and we found that Pelham is the town with almost the least resistance, and we were just curious as to why.
That would be a surprise to me, because we've, we've gone on the record time and time again, if you don't mind me saying it, that we didn't want the pipeline. We have invested, I think, $20,000--
$18,000.
$18,000 of your parents' money that we hadn't budgeted for to participate in hiring a, an attorney who has expertise in these matters to help us to, to stop it. We, I'll speak for myself, I feel like there's an oncoming freight train, however, and one of the things we're going to be faced with next year is whether we continue to spend your parents' tax dollars and my tax dollars to fight this battle. So far, we, I think we've done every reasonable thing that we could do, every reasonable thing that we could do to, to, to stop it, but we have no vote.
Amy, and then Paul.
I have a question for you. If, if you think that there's more that other towns are doing, or more that you would like to see us do, what is that, and then what would you like to see us do?
Well, specifically, in our group, we were trying to reach as many people as we could with our information. So along with contacting you, we contacted Hillary Clinton, Donald Trump--
Awesome.
--of which we did get responses from.
You did or did not?
We did.
Good, good.
Not directly from them.
I bet you got different responses from Hillary Clinton than you did from Donald Trump, huh?
We did. We've, we've been placed, I don't know how significant this actually is, but we've been placed on Hillary Clinton's event planning board supposedly. So we're hoping just to like get more information out to the people, so if anything there is more that we could do, we're just getting the word out to show how bad this could be, and so people are more informed of what is coming.
I think public awareness is one of the few things that you could do more, considering that now we are aware that you're doing a lot, but going from just classmate to classmate and parent to parent, not a lot of people know that it's happening. They see a sign once or twice around the roads, but they don't know why they're saying no to the pipeline, or why they're saying yes to the pipeline. If they have natural gas, then it's might be a good option for them. But a lot of the majority of Pelham runs off of oil to heat their houses. So people might not be aware that it's going to be something that will affect them or will not affect them.
So, okay, Morgan, go ahead.
Just to go off of what Carolyn said, so a lot of oil will heat homes, but this is also going towards electricity, if I'm correct, right?
Yeah.
For the electrical grid.
So, may I restate that?
So this is, is this going towards like the electrical, like, grid?
Okay. So I would say yes and no, more no than yes. And my basis for that is there another, there is another pipeline proposal coming up through the coast that's called the Spectra Pipeline, which involves three entities, and that would bring, use an existing right of way and bring almost as much gas up that direction as Kinder Morgan would bring through the southern part of New Hampshire. And that is targeted specifically for the existing power plants in New England. And they're increasing their capacity by 900 million cubic feet per day, whereas the Kinder Morgan pipeline would be 1,400 million cubic feet per day. So you can see it's a significant portion of that. We, I've also got appointed by the selectmen to the Energy Facilities Advisory Committee, which is a group of us meeting under the aegis of the National Region Planning Commission to study this thing. And we have representatives from most of the towns in the area, and we wanted to do a, you know, just look at all the data, factual stuff, and present our things that will go to the NRPC commissions, and they will submit a report to the state and to, to the, to FERC. We have met with representatives of utilities, we, they, we've had discussions, I've had, was at a discussion with Senator Shaheen, I was at a meeting with Congressman Custer. So we have been active in this thing, and most meetings, we have, we discuss the pipeline. Also, the town website has documents that we filed that cover all this stuff too. So there's a fair amount of information out there. Amy?
I had a suggestion, I guess, based on what you guys have been saying, and one, thank you for being here tonight. There's nothing more powerful than the voices of our youth. And talking about going to parent to parent in the schools, people don't know. It's something I'm just coming up with off the top of my head, and I'm sure we'll have to talk about it here with this board. But what do you think about having a public meeting, not here at town hall, but at the school, where you guys could encourage your parents to come and engage in that conversation about what has been done, what, what hasn't been done, what do they think about this, what, what do you think about that? Is that something you think people would come to? Would, would your parents come? Would other people's parents come to a meeting at the school?
I think most definitely a lot of people would be interested in being educated on what could affect everyone in town, and I think that we would all be more than willing to help coordinate that or speak--
Plan it and get the word out, because one thing I've noticed is it's sometimes difficult to get people to come. I mean, you know, we all come from work, and we're all tired at the end of the day and stuff like that too, but it's, it's sometimes difficult to get people to come and to be interested. And if you guys think that, you know, maybe through the school, you guys can rally up some support, it might be something we want to do for public awareness and public education.
Paul?
Could be something for communities, communities night at the schools, to work with the school board, and to have, to have a dedicated classroom or something to provide the forum for something like that. That was just, that I don't comment, but I just wanted to say thank you for requesting to come forward before the board. The information that you put together, although we might have felt over the past six or eight months that we've been doing all we can, it kind of gives pause to make us ask ourselves, "Are we doing all we can?" So I just wanted to say thank you.
I just have one final question. If the pipeline does get passed and come into our town, we were, we were curious if we are guaranteed the things that they're claiming will happen, if we will see a significant lower in our taxes, or energy rates will be better. Is there a way that we can, like, have some comfort knowing that this is guaranteed?
No.
No. (laughing)
Just double checking.
The thing is that, the concern is, the pipeline is going to cost a lot of money, and the people that are backing that pipeline expect to get paid back for their, their support, their financial support. And so those costs get folded into somebody's rate base somewhere. And if they can sell all the gas, and maybe it doesn't affect us, but if they don't sell it, it's going to fall on somebody to pay for the cost. When they build a new transmission line to bring electricity down, somebody's got to pay for the infrastructure. It gets folded into the electric rates. So there's going to be a cost. Now, there may be long, if, if it lowers the total cost of energy, good. But there is speculation that they really are more focused on just getting the gas to the coast so they can export it. And if they start exporting it, there's that much less available for us here. So it's, it's kind of a crapshoot, if you will. Okay? Bill?
I want to comment on the taxes. The proposed pipe, the existing pipeline that goes right by the memorial school, that pays taxes. They pay property taxes on that, the whole length of it. I had a number in front of me one time, I don't remember what it is.
It's 22 million.
Well, no, in taxes.
That's what I'm saying. The gas company pays us now 22 million.
No, they don't. They don't pay 22 million. We don't have a budget this 22 million.
Are we on the, I'm sorry, I got the wrong, they don't pay us 22 million, they cessed this 22 million.
That's the 22 million.
So, so now it's multiplied by 25 dollars, something 2200--
He's the engineer, let him do that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's about, it's about 22, it's 2.4, it's about half a million dollars.
About half a million dollars.
I wish it was 22 million.
I wish it was too. So the existing, so the proposed new pipeline will probably pay that or, or more. We don't know. We have professional people that go out and assess these things and come back and tell us what we should tax them. Today, we tax phone lines and electric lines and all that other stuff, and, and will it lower taxes? Yeah. But are you going to see your parents skipping through the hallway when they get the tax bill? I doubt it.
No, no.
You know, half a million dollars spread over all the houses and businesses in town, it makes a difference, but it doesn't make a gigantic difference.
It's about 30 cents on the tax rate. Okay.
We did come up with that in some of our research, that there's been about, and what we found was 1.2 million paid back from the pipeline that has already been in place, which is good, but spread out over the population might not be as good as it is.
Well, it's still good, all right. Do you have anything else?
That's it?
I think we're good.
So do we, should we entertain any questions or comments from the audience? So you guys are all set, you think? I know, okay.
There's one.
Okay, so Julia, and Julia is also involved in a group dealing with the pipeline. Julia Steed Marson, you want to come up?
Sure.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Julia, nice to meet you. Thank you for all your good work. My golly, we felt like the besieged, so we're really happy to see you. My comment is, again, thank you very, very much. This is a very complex issue, and you've done a very good job at trying to reach a lot of them. I like to think of it as being a Medusa, with every time you think that you know something, suddenly another snake comes out in front of you. Not that snakes are bad, by the way, but the point of it is it's very, very complex. Kayla Law is here, and Kayla had begun work on this many, many, many months ago to help start getting people thinking about it. We have moved forward to form an outreach subcommittee of the Pelham-Windom Pipeline Awareness, because there's a lot of work to do and we need a lot of hands. So I have this information for you. It's an invitation, we need to pass that down, to learn more about the things that we've been doing. We have a subcommittee meeting now that meets once a week on Wednesdays at 6:00 or 6:30, depending on whether we're in the police station, well, not because we need to be in the police station, but because there's a community room there, and also, we also are meeting in the library. So tomorrow, we are meeting at the library at 6:00, and you are more than welcome to come. We're planning a town forum, and I just spoke to Brian this afternoon, so thank you for your help and support with that. Sue Snide has been working, she's sitting back there, to help get the room secured. And we're doing our planning this tomorrow, to plan on the format of it, and we could use your-- use your help. So, I've left contract information for you, and I would encourage you to welcome other students. And I would say that these folks have been working very hard in your town, but also there are people all along the pipeline who are very, very concerned and worried about their properties, about their rights, about their natural resources, and we should all be concerned about our beautiful rural treasures to the west of us, as well as the beautiful residential areas that we still have here. So, our Pelham Pipeline Awareness Group is just but one of 17 pipeline groups across the state, as well as New Hampshire Plan, that Kayla is working on specifically, which joins all of the pipeline groups together, and we do have partnerships with Massachusetts. A very key partner in this is also our Drakeit Pipeline Awareness folks, and they're very knowledgeable. There is a compressor station, 22,000 horsepower compressor station, that will, is slated to be built just, well, from this location, let's say, three to five miles, I don't have my directions, but from my house about a mile away. And compressor stations are of great concern because of the emissions, and there's not a lot of research, or it's beginning to come, about the health effects of this. There is also one planned for New Ipswich, which is a 44,000 horsepower compressor station. So, these are of great concern, not only because of what they can do now, but once a pipeline is established, then obviously things can be enlarged and more compressor stations can be added, and that is of great concern, both, you started mentioning fracking, issues of climate change. We have to connect all the dots to this very, very complex issue. So, thank you, those are my comments.
Okay. All right, any, okay, Brian?
Just quickly, just to give you a, just a little bit more information before you go, some of the other efforts that the Board of Selectmen have been working with, and myself, is I belong to a New Hampshire Pipeline Coalition Committee, which encompasses 17 towns that are along the pipeline route, and we decided to work together as a group to combat this pipeline, rather than waste our resources individually fighting. We felt that if we had one strong voice with a group of people, we would be in a better position to thwart this pipeline from coming into our communities. And in fact, just in the last two weeks, three more towns have joined our coalition. So, we are really working very hard collectively. As Mr. Lyon had indicated, we've retained an attorney who has an expertise in this type of, you know, gas lines being brought into different states. He works for a law firm that was successful in thwarting the Mass Pipeline, that stopped it from coming through Pepperell, Mass, and up into Hollis. So, we work very closely with them. Also, I work very closely with Kayla Law and Julia in their pipeline awareness committees. We are constantly sharing information. If I get a piece of information from my coalition meeting or from the government, I share it with them to get out to their groups, and likewise, they give me documents. I've personally met with Senator Shaheen, Senator Ayotte, Congressman Costa, Gunta, the governor. We've been, my meetings, and these folks will tell you, I've been, I feel like a politician. I've been shaking hands and kissing babies for the last 10 months, trying to get the word out to the politicians, because that's another point that you folks may want to consider when you're, when you're trying to put your group together. The politicians, this really lies with the politicians. As Mr. Lyon had indicated, we really have very little control whether or not this comes into our community. The politicians is where your best bang for the buck is. So, writing letters to your senators and your congressmen and your state representatives, those are the kinds of things that are going to help draw attention to this politically to try and, you know, keep this thing out of our community. So, those are just some of the real quick things that we've been doing that you may or may not have been aware of.
All right. We all set?
Before we go, I'd like to say that although we, I'm sure, did a good job representing the data, it was multiple classes at Pelham High School that came up with this data, so I know nobody is here but us, but I'd like to thank them for helping us research, because if it weren't for everybody in those classes, we wouldn't be up here presenting this information.
You guys did a great job.
Well, I applaud you all.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, Brian makes a good point, and this goes back many months, I think, when we first approached this, we realized the nature of the project, where the decision-making lies, and one of the approaches we took was that we wanted to have factual data, we wanted to be able to inform our elected officials, especially our Washington representatives, and that is probably the best, most pot, most potential way you can get something accomplished. One other thing which is still out there, and I don't know what's happening with it, but it was a great, the FERC process, there are--
Do they know what FERC is?
No.
We're running overtime, but I think they should let, they should know what FERC is.
All right, so FERC is a federal energy regulatory commission, which is in charge of approving pipelines, transmission lines, a whole bunch of other stuff, under the aegis of the, I guess, Department of Energy, and they can then, like you say, once they approve a project, they've got the ability to go do it, and they've approved many, many pipelines already. There is several entities in FERC that gather data, but there's only one that hears the public, and that's the one that's dealing with the environmental thing. And they've had several hearings throughout the states, and what's, I forget the guy's name that was in charge--
Eric Tomasi is the representative.
And he's a straight-up guy, as far as I can see, and he, I've heard, suggested that they considered looking at a route using, is it I-90?
Yes, the Mass Pike.
Mass Pike. Bury it under there or something like that, but we could only hope. So, anyway, your voices are important, you can make a difference. I think Julia's offered you some other things you can do, but the issue is always raising awareness, and it's difficult because you've got to say things three, four, five, maybe 10 times before people become aware sometimes, you know, it's just, that's the way it is. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, great job.
Thank you.